To our ass. See, they can hear us now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this committee, the whole meeting, to order. I don't think I have a motion for that. Sorry, I'm going through them all. Sure, like to call this meeting or at 6:02 PM. By recognizing the traditional keepers of this land and specifically our neighbors of the Alderville First Nation, with a formal territorial acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the municipality of Brighton is located on the Mississauga Nation beck territory and is the traditional territory of the Mississauga. The council in Missipalia Brighton respectfully acknowledges the Mississauga Nation are the collective stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. I have a motion moved by councillor Anderson and seconded by councillor Bateman that the committee of the whole approve the November 29 budget agenda as presented. All those in favor? Having technical difficulties with my pen. Any declarations of pecuniary interest? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If any discussion comes up with regard to the Hilton Cemetery, I'm a member of the board or church council for Trinity St Andrews United Church, which is the owner and operator of the Hilton Cemetery. I will therefore recuse myself from all cemetery discussions this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? None. Next, we move into our delegations. Our delegations are related to our our negotiations or decisions tonight regarding the grants and aid and and our external budgets. So first up, we have Bob Burke and Chair and Heather Ratt, CEO of the Brighton Public Library.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen before I start. Alright, there we go. So thank you for allowing Bob and I to be here tonight to speak for a few minutes about the Brighton Public Library budget, proposed budget for 2022. I know that you've all received a copy of the budget and I know you've poured over it. It's really super reading, good bedtime reading. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that. What I'm gonna just do for a few minutes is talk about the biggest change for the library coming on January 1st, 2022. And that is that we are moving to a fine free library service model. So I will just talk about that very briefly and like I said, I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end. So we're calling this Throwing the Book at Barriers to Equal Access. So just to give you a little bit of background on fines. Fines have been a longstanding part of library service. As many of you know, probably they've been fodder for many stories and jokes. Anyone that is a fan of Seinfeld may recognize the person on the right here as bookman. He was the library cop that was charged with getting the book back from Jerry Seinfeld that was many, many years overdue. So these are the kinds of jokes that come out about library, about library fines and library books coming back very late. This past weekend, a book was returned to the Vancouver Public Library after being overdue. I believe it was 68 years. So these things do happen quite often and they always make the news. Fine free models are a growing trend. This is very apparent since the beginning of the pandemic. Since September, six Ontario libraries have moved to a fine free model. And there are 49 Ontario libraries in total that are either completely fine free or have a partial fine free model. But I would say that even though these bookmen is funny and these jokes are funny, library fines are actually no joke because they actually work against the very essence of what libraries represent. And that is a safe and welcoming environment. And it's an organization. We value equal access to everybody and library fines work against that. So here's our current practice, our daily rate and our maximum rate. There is actually no research to demonstrate that charging fines results in more material being returned on time. It's actually just more of a punitive measure. Already, it's time for pie. So as you can see, that very, very small sliver of blue pie there, that is the percentage of the 2021 operating budget that comes from fine revenue. And the rest of the pie is all other income. Here is our fine revenue going back to 2016. Each year, we budgeted for $4,000 income coming from fines. The third column represents the percentage of the operating budget that that $4,000 represents. And the fourth column is the actual income from fines for each of these years. Now, 2018 took quite a dip. I have a feeling that's due to the renovations and we were probably a little bit easier on patrons than we were in previous years. And then, of course, 2020 and 2021 up to October 31st, we saw a huge decrease in fines, partly because we were we were waiving a lot of fines because we didn't think it was fair. People couldn't get out and everyone had been through so much already that that they didn't need to worry about fines as well. So we saw a huge decrease. So you might say, well, what's wrong with charging fines? Well, lots of libraries do it and lots of libraries will continue to. But they do create barriers to service. They create inequality by not allowing that equal access. They cause embarrassment for users and staff members. So you come to the counter and you haven't used your card in a while and oh, you've got fines that's blocking your card and you don't have the money to pay, so you can't use library services. And it's a financial hardship to those that may need to access services the most. So just consider this, that we do not charge fines on eBooks or e-audiobooks. And users that have these devices and also have the knowledge to use these devices perhaps are the people that may be more able to afford the fines, yet we're not charging them. Embarrassment again comes up because it may prevent users from returning and accessing other services that the library provides. And keep in mind, this is fine free only. It's not a free for all. We will still charge for damaged items and lost items. Those charges will still apply. Do we have concerns about this? Of course, you don't go into a decision like this without considering the pros and cons. And of course, the biggest concern is loss of revenue, that $4,000. So what we plan on doing is having bigger, better book sales more often. We're gonna pop up with these book sales at more community events. We want to redevelop the partnership that we have with our friends of the library and have some of the big book sales like we used to in the past. People also feel guilty about returning books overdue. So we may actually see an increase in donations. And of course, we've reduced our expenses in other areas to make up for this loss of revenue. You might say, well, we aren't teaching users, especially children, responsibility. But I would ask, is this actually our responsibility? No, I don't. I don't think it is. It's nice if we can do it, but it doesn't fall to us to teach people that. You might say that there might be an increase in late material and that means waiting longer for holds. Fines are not a motivating factor to return material. We find that a lot of patrons will return material before the due date because they know that people are waiting. So we don't see that as an issue. So one of the benefits, going fine free demonstrates what we value. It's, it makes it easier to build rapport. It creates goodwill. Hopefully, we will see a return of users that have been avoiding the library due to charges that are on their card at the moment. And it also aligns with the municipality of Brighton vision to enhance our small town values. We're not here to punish people. We're here to connect and enrich and inspire. And we can do that a lot easier if we don't have barriers to access. So that's the fine free portion. I just want to give some recognition to the library and this on a high note. I just found out last week that the Brighton Public Library has been chosen to receive one of two runner-up awards for the WK Lamb Award. The WK Lamb Award is named for Canada's first national librarian and it recognizes services to seniors. So this committee was impressed with our goal to become dementia friendly through our staff training and our introduction of resources such as cognitive readers and cognitive care kits. Typically, the award is given out every second year to one winner. But this year, they said they had so many great applications across Canada. They're giving out two runner-up awards, a winner and also an honorable mention. We are in very good company here. The winner of the award is West Van Memorial Library. Oakville is the other runner-up and Toronto Public Library is receiving an honorable mention. That's it. I told you I was gonna be quick. That is it. I am happy to answer any questions on this or the budget.
Thank you, Heather. So I'm just gonna ask members of council, if there's any questions tonight for the library board. Go ahead, Mayor.
It's not a question, Deputy Mayor, just a statement that I hope council sees the value in supporting a fine-free library through the budget and I look forward to seeing councils debate on the issue if there is one.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councillor Rowley.
Thank you. I just wanna make a comment as well. Both councillor Tedman and I sit on this board and we know that the staff in the library have worked really hard to come in at a very minimal increase for their budget. I know at the top of the line here, you said it says draft number two. I know after a lot of hard work, Heather even knocked a few more pennies off the off the budget as well. I think I think they've worked hard and once again, just wanna say it's something that we need to support.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, Heather. Clearly, you guys are doing an amazing job.
Great, thank you. So I can be excused to go watch Yellowstone now?
Sure, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thanks.
So I have a motion moved by Mayor Ostrander and seconded by councillor LeBlanc that the delegation from Bob Burke and Heather Ratt of the Public Library be received. All those in favor? Next, we have Joanne Dunkley, Director from Sunny Days Program.
Hi, can you hear us?
We sure can.
Okay, I have Deanna, the other director here with me. Um, we're not like Heather and have a slideshow, sorry.
That's okay.
So this is the first time we've done this with you guys because we've never applied for the $20,000 grant before. So we're just reaching out for some more funds to help Sunny Days grow. We are getting bigger. It's, our furniture is quite old. They were all hand-me-downs when we opened. We started with six members. As of today, we are up to 23 members. We've grown since we spoke to everybody a couple of weeks ago. So we're reaching out. We do get, we do a lot of fundraising. I'm not sure if everyone's seen it on our Facebook. And that's how we managed to get through doing things for our members and taking them out on trips and into the community. They do pay a daily fee to come. We do not wanna put the fees up. A lot of the parents don't have the funding to put the fees up. So to buy the extra appliances, furniture, chairs, tables, we need help from the city.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up to members of council to see if they have any questions for you.
Sure.
Anyone here have questions? I don't see any questions tonight, Joanne. So that's great. Thank you for coming and giving us a little bit of a little bit more information and we will be debating or deliberating over these a little bit later on in the meeting. So you're welcome to stay or you too can go and watch, you know, Yellowstone if that's your.
That's okay. We can hang around for a bit.
Okay, thank you, Joanne.
Fine, thank you.
I have a motion made by councillor Anderson and seconded by councillor Bateman that the delegation from Joanne Dunkley, Director of Sunny Days Program, be received. All those in favor? Gary? Next, we have Rhonda Bateman from the Lower Trent Conservation Authority.
Good evening. Thank you Deputy Mayor, Mayor Ostrander and councillors. I'm gonna try and share my screen. Hopefully, this won't be too bad. Okay, you can see that?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. So I thought I would discuss the budget and business plan and and then move over and talk about the new regulations. If you guys have the patience for that this evening. So here's our watershed. As you know, we have seven municipalities that make up the watershed. We have a 10-member board. Brighton, because of its population, has two members on our board and Brighton is only one of two municipalities that we don't share with any other conservation authority. So Crammy and Brighton are the are the lucky winners. So here are our current programs. They're not in a detailed list, but it's an overview of some of the things we do. Environmental planning and regulations under our Regulation 16306 and Planning Services. Flood protection, flood, which includes flood forecasting and warning, low water response, natural heritage stewardship, environmental monitoring and reporting, environmental education, source water protection, geographic information systems, conservation lands, the Bay of Quinte remedial action plan and community outreach. This is, this is not all of our programs by a long shot. But it's, it is an overview. And most of the programs and services are focused on our local needs as determined through the board members and through partner municipalities. Some are funded through municipal agreements and other agreements with agencies or businesses. So Bay of Quinte remedial action plan, for example, is paid for through the province and the federal government. So what I'm here to speak to about tonight is our annual, I'm sure you all got a copy of the annual business plan, which outlines our strategic plan elements and details our current programs and activities and identifies a few new work plan targets that are over and above our normal annual work plan. We edited the business plan this year, made it a bit shorter and have provided links to the strategic plan within the document. So these targets are directly related, excuse me, to the items in our strategic plan. And the budget is included in the business plan to illustrate the expenditures and revenues associated with delivering our products, projects, sorry. So our operations budget was affected this year by an enhanced salary review that was completed. And the review was of neighboring and similar-sized conservation authorities and resulted into an increase in some of our staff salaries. The funds required to implement the review is part of the operations increase that you'll see for this year. And the remainder of that increase for 2022 will be taken from previous year's surplus. We did our best to keep the operations increase to 2%. We can talk about what it started at. We started at about 7.5% and moved it down to five and 2.5 and the board decided that too was going to be our magic number for this year for operations. And as a reminder, the board approved the capital asset management plan in July of 2020. And the capital asset management plan, of course, is essential to our business. It guides our purchase, use, maintenance and disposal of major assets that we need to conduct our business. And it's going to allow us to stabilize our annual budgeting process. So that plan was shared with all of our municipal partners in 2020 prior to budget deliberations. And as stated in last year's budget presentation and letters, the board directed that 50% of the capital asset budget or $49,000 be brought forward for 2021 and the remaining 50% or $49,000 to be brought forward for the 2022 budget. So that is a large portion of the total increase in levy for this year. Now, moving forward for the next few years, it will stay at that, at that level, the total level of $98,000. So here's an overview of our revenues. Of course, the majority of our funding, 51%, is from our municipal partners through levy. Quick note there, it was 52% last year. So our other largest revenue stream are our fees and other revenues that while we get them from all sorts of things, but it is quite a bit from our regulatory fees. So the rest of the funding is from federal provincial government partnership agreements, donations, grants. And as you can see, that are part of your surplus for this coming year is 7% of the budget, which is a lot larger than we'd like, but hopefully, in the next couple of years, we can bring that back down. So, excuse me. And sorry, here, here's our expenditures broken out by section. The watershed science and services, the most staff and the widest variety of programs. They're, and they are the largest source of revenue generation outside the levy. Conservation lands is our smallest expenditure line, but most of the capital asset management requirements fall under conservation lands. We don't, we still do not charge a fee for access to our properties. We do request donations and we get a few of those. We'd like a lot more. But that isn't happening right now. Corporate services is, we work for all program areas and expenses are generally staff and supplies to use corporate wide. So our GIS and our admin and our finance and HR all fall into that category. So onto the great numbers. So our the operation budget increase overall is 3.36%. Having said that, our levy increase is 2%. So with the apportionment, our levy apportionment, which is given to us by the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, sorry, Ministry of Northern Development Mines, you're in the develop, oh, sorry, forestry. On, on. The the year apportionment is 2.41%. So the operating increase is $3,840 and the capital levy is the total is $98,105. So it's been increased to your annual capital levy of $15,639. So it's so had that increased last year and again this year and then next year, it won't change. So the apportionment indicates the percentage of the total levy that's applicable to each municipality. It's based on population within the watershed and the current value assessment of each municipality. So here is everybody else's as well as your own for this year. So the operating is at 163,000, capital at 15.6 for a total of 178,888, which is a total increase of 6.97%. And as I say, the operating, we tried to keep it down to 2%. And so our overall operating budget is 1.024 million. Our capital is at 98,000 for a total of 1.127 million. So the overall average increase was 6.56%. Is, I'm, I'm gonna move forward and talk about the new regulations, but if, are there any questions before I move on?
Councillor, do you have any questions at this point?
One question. Rhonda, so the capital increase for Brighton is doubled, correct?
Yes, everybody's is doubled.
Thank you.
So, yes, sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point for Rhonda? Go ahead, councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Rhonda. I think that's fairly substantial though for everyone. It's very substantial for us as well. It's, we're matched up with Trent Hills pretty evenly. I just wondered what, what brought that on to be, maybe it's right here. I maybe I'm missing it, but what brought it on to be over 100% increase?
The capital, oh, the capital is, so the board wanted to, so our capital, our annual operating for cap, or sorry, our annual capital levy is $98,000. And we just brought that capital asset management plan into being last year. So the board wanted to make it less onerous in a single year. So last year, we charged or we levied everyone for half the value. So we only levied for $49,000 last year with the with the board direction that we would, we would come back this year with the remaining $49,000. So next year, when you see it, it's gonna stay at the $15,639 mark.
So it's a bit of a catch-up and then
Yeah.
release.
Yes, it's catch and release over two years. If we, it would have been, it, the board decided that it was too much of of a hit all at once. So to phase it in over two years, that was their thinking. And I think that was, I think it was wise from a, from a financial standpoint for our municipalities because that would have, that's a big hit. I, I get it. I totally understand that. But we haven't had this in the past. And we, I guess in the past, what normally would happen is we'd have a capital cost and we'd come and ask for, say, 9% one year and a little bit the next year and then come back perhaps and ask for seven or eight percent. And this should stop that large up and down fluctuation.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm a supporter of what you do and I, you're Yeah, well, thank you. I'm a supporter of what you do and I, your explanation makes sense, so, uh, uh, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, for chair. So the fifteen thousand to me is, is relatively cheap for a service that you give. As if we had to hire multiple consultants for every project and we had to go to tenders for everyone. Our staff time and all the different times and going up to tenders and the delay on our projects would be quite more substantial than a fifteen thousand dollar increase. And the money you save us, if we had to go hire consultants, plus you have everything there for us for a history of what's happened in the past. So I feel like the fifteen thousand is relatively deserved and relatively small for what you do. So it's not a question, it's an opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, at this point? Otherwise, we're just gonna move on.
Yep. Uh, Rhonda, you, you spoke about that you had to, um, kind of dip into your, um, surplus funds. What kind of impact does that have on you in, in years going forward?
Well, um, right now we do have, um, the surplus funds to dip into, um. A lot of that was, um, the last couple of years with increased revenue in, in our fee service or service, um, as you know, building and, and planning has, services have gone through the roof. Um, so we did have a little bit, um. Going forward, it's not sustainable. We recognize that. So, um, I'm hope, yeah, um, that's what I'll say right now. It's not sustainable. We, we are going to be going through a new process with, um, the, the new regulations coming out to we, we'll have to revisit how we do our, uh, our budgeting, um, based on levy regulation and that sort of thing. So it isn't sustainable at all.
Council Bateman?
Hi, Rhonda. Uh, I'm just gonna say something. Correct me if I'm wrong, just so everybody understands. That we, Mary, uh, Councilor Tabman and I get to sit in on the, the board meetings. When there's challenges to the regulations that the lower Trent is authorized to enforce under the province, those challenges in the court has to come out of your budget, correct?
Yes.
And if, when a court case goes, if we win the court case or the conservation authority wins the court case, any fines collected, don't go to the conservation authority. They go back to the province, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so that's an impact on the budget. So whatever the regulations are being enforced, none of the conservation authority recoup that money. But the money for fighting the regulations that they're mandated to enforce have to come out of their operating budgets. I just, I thought that's important information and that impacts not just lower Trent, but all the CAs.
Um, and I believe we've shared the communication from our board, um, regarding a letter that we've written to Conservation Ontario to, um, have the Conservation Ontario as a representative lobby, the province to get some of our funding back. Um, we still have not recouped that sixty four thousand dollars that we lost uh, in twenty nineteen and as well, we've asked for them to lobby for some um, return of those legal fees, uh, in these court cases, staff time and or, well, and legal fees would be ideal, but, uh, we'll be meeting with Conservation Ontario, our chair will be meeting with Conservation Ontario at the end of this week. With their Board of Director or their, their chair and we'll see where that goes after that. So, um, Sterling Rodden also sent an, a letter, or a, sorry, they had a resolution at their council meeting, um, in support of that letter. And that was sent to Conservation Ontario as well.
Okay, thank you. Are we, oh, one more. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Ms. Bateman, you mentioned that, um, the conservation authority does not charge for access to, uh, conservation areas in, in your catchment area. And, and I know that to be true because I use uh, the areas, um, fairly frequently. But I do know that other conservation authorities do charge for parking or access. And I'm curious if, if it's been mentioned at the board, brought up at the board and if, if there's a rationale to continue not charging.
It, it comes up quite often. Staff are concerned about it as well. Um, excuse me. We, to set up a, um, user pay system. Um, there's, there's a large degree of initial outlay there. It'd be over four, at least over five thousand dollars. And the other issue is we have multiple entrances to our conservation areas, which would require, uh, a single usage and thereby we'd have to gate or fence most of our areas and, uh, that also costs a lot of money. So we're, we're, we're doing a, we're constantly doing a, a benefit analysis, cost benefit analysis to see whether it's feasible. And we don't have the money to have a staff person on site at all of our conservation areas for, um, collecting parking. So it definitely is considered though. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think you can move on to the next part.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll try not to take too much of your time and overwhelm you. I hope some of you have sat in on some of the, um, webinars regarding the new regulations. Um, I know I've, well, we'll go through this quickly. So there are three new regulations, the mandatory programs and services, the transition plans and agreements and the rules of conduct in conservation areas. I have, uh, Ontario Regulation one sixty three oh six there. We're waiting still on that regulation, uh, changes that, uh, the first three are from the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, and the last one is from M and R F, and we haven't heard when that one's gonna come out. So I'm just gonna give a quick overview of mandatory programs and services. Risk of natural hazards, of course, which is dynamic reaches, erosion, flooding, hazard lands, hazard, hazardous sites, low water and drought, and that includes areas of wetlands, river stream valleys, Great Lakes or inland, inland lake shorelines, unstable soils or bedrocks. And the programs that fall under natural hazards are flood forecasting and warning. Uh, the ministry has added drought or low water response, which is something we did, but now it's a mandatory service. Ice management, um, that is only applicable if it's determined that we need it locally. We certainly don't have one now and, uh, we're, we're not heading towards that, just to let you know in the near future. Uh, infrastructure, so that's operations and as we were just speaking of asset management. So the infrastructure is, um, flood and erosion control structures. Uh, and other things we own and operate, uh, comments on applications and proposals and plan review comments to the municipalities administering and enforcing the act. So that's section twenty eight and twenty eight point oh one and section thirty of the act. Um, excuse me, there, uh, these other application proposals would be specific to the Edgar Resources Act, Drainage Act, Environmental Assessment Act and, oh, well, the Niagara Scarpment, which we're not part of. Um, mandatory programs and surfaces, conservation and management of lands. So included are this in um, are just about everything we do on conservation lands, which is great, um, early um, versions of this regulation had no, um, no reference to, um, trails and parking lots and passive recreation. It has changed and the ministry recognized the use of conservation lands for passive recreation um, and all of those, um, required facilities with them, including privies. Um, require maintenance and because of the legal liability of having these properties, all of these things are now covered. So we're very thankful for that. Um, and I believe has a lot to do with MPP Piccini or, or Minister Piccini now. Um, he uses conservation authority trails quite a bit. And, uh, he can see the, um, the benefits of them for sure. So this includes things like, um, fencing signage, patrolling unauthorized entry protection from exposure liability under the occupier, occupiers liability act. So it's really nice that all this is included. We, we are now required to, um, develop a conservation area strategy with public consultation and a land inventory. And those are due, uh, to the ministry by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Um, there are other programs and services that were listed in the, in the regulation, including the provincial groundwater monitoring program and the service water monitoring program. We did those anyway, but now they are mandated, um. Excuse me, the province never paid for, uh, us to do those programs. They do however, pay for some of the equipment that is used in those programs. And we have our task now to develop a watershed based resource management strategy, uh, by December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And there's, it's very specific as to what we're supposed to put in there, um, because that's not the top program or top priority right now that will, um, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at what needs to be in there except that it's to provide guiding principles and objectives to inform the design and the delivery of programs and services that we're required to deliver under mandated services. So it's our mandated services, how we deliver them, what our objectives are and how we use some of the other programs that aren't mandated to fulfill, um, our mandated programs. So, uh, source water protection is covered as is, um, the Building Code Act. This is not applicable. Um, we don't do a, a sewage sector program at LTC. So there are a few CAs that do have that program. And next is, so the transition plans and agreements, that is what we're working with right now. That is in effect. Um, we are to have all of our agreements with municipalities in place by January first, twenty twenty four. Our transition plan is the first component of this, uh, regulation. And it, it was due by December thirty first. Uh, it has been distributed already. It was approved at the board, uh, on November eleventh and I believe it was distributed to municipalities on the eighteenth or nineteenth of November. We, uh, developed a transition plan in accordance with, um, a group of conservation authority, um, general managers and NCAOs in, in the eastern part of the province. We're a part of a group and we developed them together and, um, we're using similar templates. And, uh, we're working very closely with each other to make sure that we're, for those municipalities that we share. Um, so we have a couple of municipalities that we share, uh, with two other, uh, conservation authorities. So they all are receiving the same transition plan, basically. It's just tailored to their own. We have the same formatting and everything, just so that our municipalities aren't overwhelmed getting three different versions of three different transition plans all over the map. So we're working hard to make, make it as easy as possible. So the next, uh, phase that we're working on is for preparation of the inventory of programs and services. So we're working on this right now. Um, it's due to the municipalities by February twenty eighth. It will probably get to you before that. Uh, after our AGM in February, I'm hoping. Um, we are waiting for another regulation before we can finalize the inventory. And, um, the inventory has not just programs and services, but the costing for these programs and services. So that's taking a little bit longer than we thought it would. And then phase two is the phase that we sit down with our municipal partners for the next, I hope it doesn't take a year and a half, hopefully before that, to, um, discuss the agreements, uh, on the inventory. And during that time, every four months, I have to, um, give the ministry an update on what we're doing. Uh, every three months, I get quarterly updates. Um, so we'll be meeting with, um, staff and councils to, um, determine where we want to go with non mandated programs. We already have agreements um, with Brighton, uh, for, uh, risk management official services, for planning services, for, uh, source water, um, outreach and education. So, um, they'd be similar to that and, um, we have to look at our inventory to see what isn't mandated and what you may or may not, uh, want to participate in. On top of that, so our, our, um, current agreements work well. And, uh, we don't wanna switch them up too much, but, um, we'll have to revisit all of them. The last one, the last regulations rules of code, code of conduct in conservation areas. So this, um, regulation is a simplified, it's called, I call it a generic regulation. All thirty nine conservation authorities had their own um, regulations for conservation areas and they were all the same. So the government got rid of thirty nine, or thirty eight, sorry, thirty six, thirty six of these and replaced it with one. And, uh, it's, it's basically an updated wording, um, to be, to be way more politically correct and, um, there's really no notable changes that would affect anything we currently do. So that was, that was helpful. Um, so I just wanted to say that one of the, there were a few good things that came out of the regulation from the initial draft. Now, uh, of course, the first big one was the inclusion of passive recreation. I'm thrilled with that. Um, there was an extension of the timelines that were given on all, all of these, uh, projects and things uh, to allow more thorough consultation and negotiation with our municipalities because, um, because of the lateness of the release of these regulations, I know I've been in front of your council, I don't know, maybe five or six times in the last two years. And it's always, where are the regulations? We finally have some. We're not done yet, but we finally have some. So I, I'm thrilled that that's happening. But in the meantime, there's a provincial election in June. And as you well know, there's a, a municipal election coming up as well, which really would put a kibosh on negotiations and setting the timelines that we would like. So they've extended the timelines to allow us to get over those humps, um, where, you know, lame duck councils and stuff would have, have a problem. Um, there was, uh, early on a requirement for community advisory board, but they've, they've excluded that. Um, many CAs already have, um, outside boards or, or, um, say a force management committee or, um, education committee, that sort of thing. So they didn't, um, keep it. So they didn't feel that there was a need for that anymore. Um, I wanted to end with this lovely, um, photo. This is a photo from twenty twenty. And this is Ms. Skinkle, Colleen Skinkle. Stinkle, or sorry, and Sickel. Oh my goodness, I'm sorry. This is Colleen Stickle. She's a wonderful lady. She, um, donated an acre of property adjacent to Proctor Park that is now part of Proctor Park Conservation Area. So we're, um, a relationship, we're, we're trying to do our best, uh, to uh, enhance all our relationships with our partnering municipalities. And we're going to have a lot of I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be around a lot in the next year and a half or so, um, with your staff and, uh, with yourselves, trying to, um, figure out where we're going, uh, according to the regulations and, uh, looking at what changes with levy and, uh, that sort of thing. So I look forward to it. It's gonna be a good challenge for me. And, uh, hopefully we'll all come out better on the other side. So thank you very much.
Uh, thank you much, so much, Rhonda. Does, uh, council have any questions for Rhonda on the last part? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so maybe, maybe you don't know and maybe you do know the answer to this. Will or do municipalities now, uh, pay for cert, pay for the services in our agreements above and beyond the levy? So that will continue, that will continue moving forward through these regulations as well?
Yeah, that's part of the regulations is, is, um, excuse me, defining. So they have, they have it set up that there's category one, which is strictly levy mandated programs. And then the category two, which is what all of your agreements are currently with Lower Trent. And then there's an option for, uh, category three. So if there's something that Lower Trent Conservation would like to, would like you to participate in. Then it would be. I can't think of anything off the top of my head right this minute, but there might be a program that we have available that you're not utilizing. Or that you are utilizing but paying levy for currently, then we would come back and say we 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 ask for a. An agreement or an MOU for that service.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Any other questions? Looks like that's it. Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
We're just seeing you lots.
Thank you. I do too. I'm just going to sign it. Thank you.
I have a motion made by councillor LeBlanc and second by councillor Rowley. The the delegation from Rhonda Bateman, Chief Administrative Officer of Lower Trent Conservation Authority be received. All those in favor? It's carried. And our last delegation is Colleen McCabe, Executive Director from the Brighton Auxiliary Rescue Unit. We can't really hear you. Let's see. Try again. No, we can't hear you, Colleen. We we think it's your mic. Yeah. Not really. Is there someone else listening as well?
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Oh, that's better. Thank you. Yes. Can you hear us? No. We can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you now as well.
Good.
Fabulous.
Yay.
I'm Colleen McCabe. I'm Executive Director and Deputy Training Officer for the Brighton Auxiliary Rescue Unit. As you may recall, we did present a delegation early in September concerning our operations. And I opted not to provide you with the same presentation tonight. As an update for, I guess, the end of year for the the boating season. So as you you may recall, we do provide search and rescue marine services. At no cost to people who are participating in on water activities in our local area. And so when we last updated you, we had responded to sixteen calls as of September. We are now at twenty five missions, lives saved. We are volunteers, a hundred percent local volunteers, saving lives on the water. Some of the serious life threatening calls that we responded to this year included. Fishing vessel overturned on Rescue Bay with one person in the water, a dual carbon monoxide poisoning. Head injury late at night approximately three AM, missing person who was left behind on Bald Head Island. We also saw multiple boat roundings due to the lower water levels we saw this year. And many, many new and inexperienced boaters traversing through our area. So this time, I guess I can bring to your attention, we have two requests, I suppose, in place. So we have our annual rent and aid request that is modeled after last year's. So we are requesting the boat slip for the municipal marina based out of Gossport, as well as. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar cash contribution. As you're also aware, Brighton generously provided ten thousand dollar loan last year as well as. Sorry, a ten thousand dollar grant last year as well as a seventy thousand dollar loan towards the purchase of our new rescue vessel. And I do have to say it has been tremendous in its abilities to be able. To allow us to perform the search and rescue missions that we have performed this year. In fact, we were able to get in and out of Weller's Bay. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with the narrow, very shallow channel. And how shallow Weller's Bay can be, and particularly in times of lower water levels. Being able to enter Weller's Bay to search for missing people or overturned vessels was quite phenomenal, unlike our our old boat. That we had. I will note for you that twenty twenty one has been a very difficult fundraising year for organizations such as ours. Many of the fundraisers we would normally look to to help with funding, equipment, operations. These funders pivoted towards supporting. Organizations that specifically are helping people who have been negatively affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And therefore, we are deemed ineligible as an organization. We also typically raise around ten thousand dollars through our donate a boat program. This year, we netted seven hundred dollars from our donate a boat program. Again, due to lockdowns and the various restrictions and regulations, it's been difficult, as it were. Also, from a training perspective, because of the restrictions, the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary has placed on its units. We could only train with a maximum of five people on our rescue vessel, which meant we needed to be creative. And our crew configuration. So I will also note the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary had limited funding. From previous years. So we were only paid for specific training that involved new members or for our missions. So hence our need to be creative. And, you know, unfortunately, this did result in we trained every week. You know, resulting in having to utilize a lot of our experienced members in order to to make this work. And there's a certain amount of, I suppose, fatigue that goes with that. Plus, with the call volume, in a normal year, we would see eight to ten calls. Last year during twenty twenty twenty, we saw approximately thirteen, we did see thirteen missions. So we thought that was quite the increase. And then this year, twenty five missions with seventeen local volunteers. Running this. So I am proud to say we responded to all twenty five missions. And we've seen a decrease in our response line, which is fabulous for the people that need us. So with respect, I suppose, to the second request that we have made, I'm not sure if you've got a letter before you that we submitted in September eighteen. We have requested that the seventy thousand dollar loan be forgiven. Main reason for requesting this is because we are a small group of volunteers. That have seen an increase in demand for our skills, saving lives on the water. Due to the difficulties in fundraising and the the people effort that it takes. To try and meet my our needs. That's why we're requesting that. I'm happy to take any questions that you have, or if you like, I can go through the presentation.
That's great. Thank you very much, Colleen. No doubt that you are doing amazing work as well in Brighton. Council, any questions for of clarifications at this point? Go ahead, councillor Bateman.
Thanks for the presentation, Colleen. Just a couple of questions. And first, I support what you guys do. It's tremendous work. For the loan forgiveness, my first question would be jurisdiction that you cover. How many municipalities does that take in? It's. Beyond just municipality of Brighton, correct?
Yes, so we cover approximately six hundred square miles of water. So and that's going out to the American Canadian border as well as a little bit of Crammy, Prince Edward County and Quinty West.
Just a follow up. Have you reached out to any of those other municipalities? I I know the municipality of Brighton. Put forth the loan of seventy thousand dollars, but have you reached out to them? As well to see if they would chip in for the cost of this vessel?
Cost vessel, I believe there were requests put forward in twenty twenty to other municipalities. I would have to confirm that for sure. What I can say is that other municipalities have contributed towards operating costs for unit in twenty twenty. We try to base that. On the number of calls that we do with their waters specifically. And we also have requests currently in again for operating costs to Queenie West and Cranny. I believe Prince Edward is not accepting applications until January or February next year.
Think is that anyone else? Councillor Rowley?
Thank you, Mayor. This might be for Ms. Whitfield. So we. We've loaned them seventy thousand dollars. Is that at a zero percent increase? Or is there a, as far as not increased interest, are we at zero percent? And do we have a timeline of which we expected it to be paid back?
Just for clarification, right now, we're asking questions of our delegation. We'll be debating this later. We can ask those questions of staff at that time. Okay? I just want to keep it to, well, while we have Colleen here, councillor Anderson?
This would constitute a question, I think. Has there been any requests to the province or the Coast Guard, which is, I think Coast Guard is federal? Has there been any requests or talks with them to, since you're covering six hundred square miles and you're 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 at this end of the. Their catchment area. The Coast Guard in Coburg stationed there all year round. Coburg has the benefit of that, or the people that have trouble have the direct benefit of that. People here wouldn't have the support if it wasn't for this council and this community. Showing giving you that support to do the great work you do. I think it's time that some of these areas are looked at more from a from a. More of a larger regional basis. And the councillor Bateman made a good point there. Actually, I liked that. Was where he was asking about the other communities that you do service. I think you head all the way to Wellington. And you also support Coburg as well. You head off that way, too. So has that all been really looked at before we can make a decision on such a large request for Brighton here?
Absolutely. It has been looked at. The Canadian Postcard Auxiliary does not provide any funding for any equipment. The only funding they provide is for very select training at this point, and they're decreasing it next year. The funding that will be available for a training will be even less than was this year. And and they provide funding for missions. So there's no funding for equipment. We did, and the name of the grant, so it is a federal grant that is available. We were not eligible for because of being a Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary unit. They they do not provide funding for equipment.
The question, are you not a nonprofit?
We are a nonprofit and a registered federal charity.
Well, there are funds floating around for that. Are you taking advantage of this question? Taking any advantage on any of those right now?
We absolutely tried to. We did put in a funding request, the Ontario Trillium Foundation last year that we got a denial from. Early at the beginning of this year. Currently, the grants that they're offering again are very COVID specific. And like they're building resiliency in the communities. We we're not eligible as an organization because of. I guess we're not COVID specific.
I think we need to do some good talking about this sometime, but thank you for your answers and we'll talk more about it tonight.
Thank you so much. Anyone else have a question? Councillor LeBlanc?
Thank you through your chair. As we get more inexperienced boaters and let's say we get more into the tourism and we open up and more boaters are going to come. And more people are going to come here to travel because they want to want to get up to get out. You see your trend more responses?
We've already seen an average rate. So in non pandemic years, eight to ten calls per year. The first pandemic year, we're at thirteen calls. We're now at twenty five. An overall two hundred and fifty percent increase in the amount of missions we're seeing. And we're relying on local volunteers with many of us actually holding down full time jobs. While not only responding to missions, you know, ensuring that the administration regulatory procedures are in place, not right, and we're not funded for that.
One more. Go ahead.
Yes, I just going to wrap my head around this one. So with you having to pay off the loan and you got the new boat. Is there any type of equipment or new new equipment that you would need that would help you in saving saving lives? Or I know you work with the military. And being able to get there quicker to radar a sight of fog like I have at my Mercedes, I can see right through the fog. You guys don't have that, but you know, that type of equipment you'd want for searching for heating that you would buy if you didn't have to pay off this loan, that would help you in quicker response.
Absolutely. So there is, so all I can absolutely confirm, we are operating safely and effectively. So there is equipment that we could absolutely use in order to be able to respond to even more, I suppose, high risk scenarios. So one of the ones that we've looked at that is, I I would suggest a top list item is updating our communications equipment. So right now we're limited to three wireless headsets while we have two wired and vice versa. My apologies. So two wireless and three are wired, and that limits our movement around our around the boat while we're on a mission. And so in order to update the communications equipment, we've discovered we need to do a full update on it. And so I've actually got a quote for that just recently, and we're looking at approximately seventy five hundred to ten thousand dollars Canadian in order to do that. And that's what the volunteers actually doing the work on the boat. We do the vast majority of our work. We also require immersion suits. Currently, what we have on the boat, I would stress, are from the nineteen eighties. And I could go further down the list with life raft on the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary. We expect. Will require us to wear helmets. We expect that's going to happen in twenty twenty two, which again, we need to purchase ourselves. They will not they will not provide the funds that we need for the helmets. And there's an engine system modern upgrade that we should perform. So we have the information we need. We've got two homes. There's one in the. The cockpit area. There's one that's on the the deck area. So the deck area would require an upgrade.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much, Colleen. And again, we will be debating this tonight. So you can stick around if you like, but. I'm sure it'll be boring. I have a motion made by councillor Bateman and seconded by councillor Anderson. That the delegation from Colleen McCabe, Executive Director of Brighton Auxiliary Rescue Unit be received. All those in favor? It's carried. And next we have citizen comments. Do we have anyone? We have none? And so next we're moving on to our staff report and I'll turn the floor over to Lena Whitfield, our Director of Finance. And you can give us an update for tonight.
Thank you very much. And I've given, there was a package, I guess, in your agenda, a small report just dated today. And it gave a little summary of where we were and where we we've been going. So we've met on November fourth and again on the twenty second. And the current increase. Tax increase is one point eight nine percent with all of the numbers that we have in the budget currently. Which include everything that was in the the first draft, as well as the new capital projects that were requested. that were requested to be added in and staff to find funding for in the last, at the last meeting. So the book that the small little notebook that I sent to you starts off with their grants and aid. Then it goes to your external budgets. And then it starts talking about all of our capital, our current capital projects and how they will be funded. So right now, the capital budget is five percent increase over the capital budget of two thousand and twenty one. When we first started our first draft, it was three percent, so it's increased slightly. Some of the ways that we had to fund the projects that were added was through reserves. So the tax support changes at the end of the capital budget. It discusses the how we funded them through the reserves. And it talks about, and you can see your reserves have also been restated, and that's provided to council within their book. If you'd like, I could talk about the reserves that we took the funding from, or if everybody's read the the package, then that should be.
I believe we've all read it, so it's probably just best to leave it up to council if they have questions about it at one point. Anything else pertinent that you wanted to add at this point, or should we go ahead?
No, I think that everything is in there. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you very much. I was quite pleased when I read this. I believe you had mentioned that we have taken some from reserves, but you're feeling that our reserves are still in a healthy place. We haven't overdone it in order to, you know, save the budget. And so I was pleased to hear that as well. So with the changes that have happened, we've gone down to one point eight nine percent. And that's for Brighton. Obviously, when we get the county, that will change a little bit. The blended rate, what's your feeling on the blended rate approximately, or do you know?
It really depends on what the education rate does and what the county rate happens to be. If we were to estimate one and a half percent, which may be low for the county all in. If we were also to estimate that the education rate stays exactly the same because our assessments are staying the same as well. Our one point eight nine percent would be a blended rate of one point five one.
Okay, so we have two things that we're going to talk about. We're talking about the external and grants and aid. We're also going to revisit the capital. I was wondering if we can just talk about capital right now? Because this is where we are on the page. So we did talk last week about where everyone was comfortable. At this point, with these changes, we've been able to add some of the items that we wanted to last time. Are we ready as a council to agree to where the capital budget is? Yeah, I'm getting a few nods of heads. At this point, is this a good time to talk about a motion? Okay, so I do have a motion here. It's moved by Counselor Bateman and seconded by Counselor Tadman that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council approve the two thousand and twenty two municipal capital budget representing gross revenue of, and I believe this is correct, Linda, nine million four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen. Is that from the updated page? Just want to make sure I have the number right.
Nine million four four hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Right, okay. So I have the motion. Is there any discussion around that at this point? Go ahead, Counselor.
LeBlanc, yeah, I'm sorry. Does this have anything to do this, what we're voting on now is just what we see on this first page, page number three? It has nothing to do with the following pages like for planning support?
This is the full capital budget that we spoke to. Remember the big fold that we had? And Linda has given us an updated one that we've been discussing. These are the changes that were made from the last meeting. And so our capital. Yeah, we've discussed the last few weeks. This is, these are the changes. So at this point, we're looking to recommend to council that we go ahead with the capital budget. So it's not operational yet. It's just capital. Counselor Bateman?
I just want to make sure, like Counselor LeBlanc, so this is the page we're looking at, and what the director provided. So when I go down, we discussed the environmental impact study of seventy five thousand dollars. Just for the Director of Planning, if we leave that in there, does that replace any developers and developments having to do an EIS? This will cover those going forward and?
Through the Chair to Council, that's the objective, yes. Now, in referring with a psychologist and in preparation for terms of reference, the indication is that there may be some requirement for the applicant to demonstrate how their particular form of development will fit into the background. ES, that's intended here. For example, you can have a very large scale development having very different implications than a small scale development, so they might have to do their custom fit. But the EIS is intended to provide all the guesswork out of the process, and then the developer would do the finish work.
Thank you.
Just a follow up. Would there be any plans to recoup that? Because I'm still not a hundred percent behind the taxpayers having to pay for an EIS for any development. Would would there be a way of recouping that for the taxpayer? Because to me, that's part of the process, and it should be borne by the person doing the development.
To the Chair, don't disagree with that. I think what we are really needing is some effort to make sure what we do have is accurate. So to date, we've had significant inaccuracies that have really derailed some projects by a year. And so we need to be responsible in our planning regime and get things as accurate as possible, so that this will get things as accurate as possible.
So what you're saying, this is going to aid staff in doing what they need to do as well. It's not just about providing something for the developers.
That's correct. Eventually, the developers are going to have to use this, of course. So in a sense, there is a framework for the developers to use, but they're going to have to do their own, their own finishing work. It won't necessarily be, take this off the shelf and where you go, you don't have to do anything necessarily. There will still be some custom fitting, but at least we know we'll be dealing with accurate information in the process so that everyone's not reinventing the wheel each time.
Okay. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The reason I I supported this last time around was entirely because what what I heard was that like an official plan and like a comprehensive zoning by law, this helps create a an overall municipal planning regime rather than what we might think of as a patchwork system that we can sometimes find ourselves dealing with now. So I had to wrap my head around that one, Counselor Bateman, because I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying, that the taxpayer shouldn't be paying for developers, the cost of development, developers should be paying for that. But we also have to understand, or I understand, that we also have good planning across the municipality, and that comes at a price as well. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And to that point, I just want to thank the Director because your last explanation explained what I wanted to hear, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments, conversation? Go ahead, Counselor Rowley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Reading on page ten of eleven, Ms. Whitfield, decrease to general government development charges borrowed from grade separation. How do we, how do we pay that back? And what else would we have used those funds for the grade separation for?
So as we're collecting development charges, they're not coming in at the same rate maybe as the projects are being completed. And so it's quite common to borrow from one and repay. So I keep a lot of notes. You can see the little red triangles. Those are all my little notes that I keep on every different project that I've borrowed from. In this particular case, you're actually repaying sewage treatment plant two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and you're repaying it from roads. That's why it's in brackets, because it's the opposite of spending the money. And that is the total amount that was borrowed. So there's nothing owing it at this point, once we repay that in two thousand and twenty two.
So we will repay the grade separation?
Oh, the grade separation, my apologies. I was looking. The grade separation will be repaid out of general government as we collect the funds. And the reason that the general government has not collected as much as we're spending is because we're actually undertaking those those studies that we were talking about already. And that money comes out of that general government development charges when it's a study like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Whitfield, did you have a comment?
I did. I wanted to make a recommendation that you change that resolution to include environmental services. And so instead of it saying the total capital being nine million four hundred and eighteen thousand, it should actually be fifteen million, six hundred and ninety nine thousand, two hundred and ninety eight dollars, which comes off of the next page. And is that just the rates for, I'm not, I'll just add that up just a second. I believe that's just the rate support. I didn't give you a full total.
Right. So should it be the tax supported, or should it be the rate supported, or the tax supported and the rate supported?
If this committee wishes for staff to go ahead with the projects in the rate supported, we should can, we should actually include them in the resolution. It doesn't mean that the money will, the the funding will come from tax support. It just means that's the total gross amount that you'll be approving as the capital budget.
Okay, so but we need to have both in there, correct? The total rate support is the fifteen million, the tax support is the nine, nine million, correct?
Right, so I've added that up to twenty five million.
I'm doing some pencils that. Twenty five million?
One hundred and seventeen thousand.
Yes.
Six hundred and seventeen dollars. Please bear in mind that you have some substantial projects, including Main Street upgrade that will only go ahead if you have the grant. You have your wastewater upgrade project of eight point eight million, your Forest Main, that's another two million. And that's how that added up so fast because it's a scaring them.
Correct. So these are the, these are the actual costs. It doesn't mean that we have, we have reserves, we have grants. We have all kinds of other things that are going to support this. These are just the actual costs that we're agreeing to, right? Okay, any other questions at this point? Go ahead, Counselor Bateman.
Just a couple of questions for clarification around some of the items. On the radar speed signs for the Director of Public Works, I know we're saying six units, and I think we said they were mobile units. Do they also capture and retain the information for the time period that they're there, similar to a black cat, or are they just there to flash the speed and hopefully deter them?
They may end up being a mix. Some might record and retain the data, some might just display speed. It depends on what kind of pricing we can get on the units and availability once we move forward with that.
Any other questions? Counselor Anderson?
This makes me think about, we're talking, want to be talking about these speed calming methods, and this is one of them, but will there be enough money there for other items that might be of might cost of coffee costly like that going ahead, or is it, have we got enough there in the future to to do something next year? We've got some speed signs, but is that the extent of it, or do we, is there money set aside for future?
Are you able to answer that question?
Perhaps even crosswalks, traffic lights, things like that.
We did not have any reserves set aside even for those speed signs, so we're taking those funds from reserves.
So if we decide to do more traffic calming measures, we're going to have to figure out how it's funded.
That's
At that time.
That's what I'm suggesting. Perhaps there should be something, you know, maybe it can't be specific tonight, but maybe it should be something set aside for that because it's, we haven't even discussed that yet. It's something that is something that seems to be a priority that we need, that we need focus on when whether it costs a lot of money or it doesn't cost a lot of money. Be prepared, be prepared if we're going to do something.
Well, traffic lights would cost a lot of money. I don't know that we could do it right away in that year, but did you have a comment? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We've asked for a staff report to come forward with regard to staff, traffic calming measures. And my anticipation would be that when we receive that report, we will also receive some costings and some opportunities on how we would fund those things. If if they're available for two thousand and twenty two, how we would fund them in two thousand and twenty two, or whether we would put them forward to the two thousand and twenty three budget. That would be my expectation.
Thank you, as we've got some thought in there. That's good.
Anyone else? Counselor LeBlanc?
Through your chair, I was okay with page number three. If we're going to add the whole fifteen million, I have a couple of questions. One is on page nine. It capital item for planning. It's a vehicle for building fifty five thousand. Vehicle for bylaw fifty five thousand. I remember two years ago, we bought the bylaws or a vehicle.
Sure, yeah. So I think we discussed a lot of this the week that you weren't here, so are you able to answer that question about?
So we do current, oh, do you want to do a question?
Don't fight over it.
We currently have the two vehicles for bylaw and building. But because we've added staff and because of COVID measures, there isn't enough vehicles for the municipality to respond to calls and inquiries and site visits. So this is an increase in the fleet to help our environmental footprint. And it's two electric vehicles, and it'll be primarily the building. People that drive the one and primarily bylaw that drive the other, because they're all local, they're all usually a controlled visit with a lot of mileage, so they don't need pickup trucks for the most part and that sort of thing. So it was in addition to the fleet, just to help staff have, you know, signed vehicles to show up site business and meet residents and contractors and the such.
Just to follow up, currently, some staff are using their own personal vehicles for that. Is that correct? Is that why?
Absolutely. There's several of us that use our own vehicles every day.
Okay.
Nice, nice way. The, when it comes to the electric vehicles, my first, my first year on council, we were supposed to put electric charging units. And we were supposed to put some in. I haven't seen the electric charging unit to go with these. Are they going to be at Sharp Street? Are they going to be here at Alice Street? What is the cost for charging these? I agree, we should have the electric charging units here. If you have them here, put them so you can use them with a credit card, so someone can use them too.
Through the Chair, there is a program where we're trying to put some public charging units out there, and we're down to two locations. I really don't know where that project got to. We did some site visits, provided all the information that we needed to. But the charging for these vehicles will be at Sharp Road. We already have a quick charge in there that we use on the one vehicle, or you can just plug them into one ten. It just takes a little longer. But you can just plug them into the one ten circuits as well.
Go ahead, one more.
We'll get a few more. The last budget, we passed a water modeling. We passed it in the last budget. I see here again, water modeling, modeling initiative, two hundred and eighty thousand. So last year, we had water modeling and was supposed to be done. Now I see it again in this budget for two hundred and eighty thousand.
Through the Chair, that was a gross project that we put in because we didn't know what the water modeling would bring us. So there was, I believe, four hundred and sixty or four hundred and ninety thousand in that project. We used approximately two hundred thousand to create the loop from Ontario Street to Royal Gala to support that into town and to provide them some duplicate and increase flow. The remaining of that is going to be towards the bulk water station project when we do the Prince Edward Street reconstruction.
So it was a study. So is there a report that can be brought to this council to show what was spent? The consultant wrote a study. This is what's required.
Yes, in the future, there will be. We're about ninety percent complete. Yes, in the future there will be. We're about ninety percent complete. Uh, we're just going back and forth on some future development requirements for the study, which isn't that project directly that you see before you.
The question I have is, we put four hundred and four hundred thousand in last year's budget. And we're putting another two hundred and eighty thousand in into this year's budget, so four hundred thousand plus two hundred and eighty thousand is six hundred and eighty thousand.
If I may, Deputy Mayor, um, Counselor LeBlanc, they, the budget wasn't all used in two thousand and twenty-one. It won't be all used. Only a portion was used for that loop that Preston was just talking about. The remainder of the budget will come forward. The reason it doesn't show, well, it does actually show that it's coming partly from um reserves, but in water and wastewater, they balance with the reserves. So we don't carry forward projects through reserves in water and wastewater because they have their own reserves for all their surplus and all their deficits. I know that's difficult to understand, so in tax support, we carry specific projects forward into reserves, so we can pull the money out again the following year. In water, all the surplus goes to reserves, so we then can pull the money out of those reserves again the following year, and that's what we're doing with this project.
But it still shows up as an expenditure, but we we have the funds and reserve that we're pulling out of, so it's not something that we're creating a new expense. It's been collected, and because we haven't re- used all of those funds, we are now will pull from it to take care of the things that we need to do, correct?
Yeah, if you read this, it shows like it's another expenditure, but I understand the explanation. The other one is, is the EA for a new well still in here of a hundred and five thousand?
Yes.
It's engineering, it's not the new well, correct?
EA.
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably could use a better title such as uh increased water capacity rather than the fourth well, but yes, it's still in there.
Because it's not necessarily going to be a well, we're just going to find out what we do need, correct?
Correct.
So if we change the name, is that better?
It should be a water taking, water taking permit. That sound better? Bet you're at seventy percent capacity of water taking permit. You want to increase your water taking permit capacity from the reservoir.
Yeah, we're currently at sixty-five percent year over year, but yeah, we're looking to increase our license um eventually to support for the water taking.
It should be rephrased, not new way.
It it could be a new well, but it's an NEA to create uh future capacity within the water treatment facility.
Is it a new well or is it an increased capacity?
We won't know until the A determines what the best route is.
Okay.
Anyone other member of council have a question at this point? Counselor Bateman?
Uh, just for the Director of Parks and Rec, just for clarification again, on uh the additional stuff, we approved uh cameras for the pickleball court, and I agree they're needed. And earlier in the process, we had budgeted forty-seven, five, four, I think, replacement cameras. And beside it, it said ten thousand coming out of reserves, and on the updated sheet that the Director of Finance handed out today, the pickleball cameras are ten thousand, and it indicates ten thousand coming out of reserves, so it's just ten thousand coming out of reserves or twenty thousand total.
Uh, my apologies. So we had originally um discussed thirty, thirty-seven, five for the cameras, and they were coming out of the modernization reserve fund. The whole thirty-seven, five, and it still is, and the additional security cameras for ten thousand is coming out of the recre- recreation reserve.
Thank you for that. Um, anything else at this point? Are we ready to vote on this? Do you want me to reread the motion? Mayor, go ahead.
You will need a friendly amendment from the mover and seconder to change the number.
Correct. Do I need the, it was percent? Okay, so we had changed the number to the twenty-five million one hundred and seventeen, six hundred and seventeen um to cover tax-supported and rate-supported uh capital. Is that okay with the uh mover and the seconder? Sorry, that's Bateman and Tadman, yes, okay. So I'm just gonna read it one more time. Uh, move by Counselor Bateman, second by Counselor Tadman, that the committee of the whole recommend that council approve the two thousand and twenty-two municipal capital budget representing a gross expenditure of twenty to twenty-five million one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and seventeen. All those in favor?
We have a recorded vote.
We we don't have recorded votes in committee of the whole.
Thank you very much.
And council, we can. So all those in favor? That's carried. So next we can uh move on to discussing our uh external uh and grants and aid. Um. Let's start with our grants and aid. Um, we have the printout that uh we were provided. Um. I'm getting, I'm getting looks. Did I miss something?
Now that capital is over, um, if the other staff would like to leave, they probably could. Um, because now we're just gonna be talking about external and grants and aid.
Sure, absolutely. Do you want to watch Yellowstone as well?
Yes.
You have to stay. I thought our meetings were quite riveting. I don't know why anyone would want to leave, but if you'd like to leave, go ahead. I'm still on season one. Okay, so let's continue on. Um, so how, we received the updated uh version from um Director Whitfield as far as our grants and aid. Um, I believe our budget max is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand, correct? And we have a hundred and ninety-one, two hundred and fifty in requests. Um, so let's just kind of go over it. The first group, we're gonna go line by line, I think, and then we'll go um to the hospitals and then the cemeteries a- as a whole at the end. Um. And I'm assuming that everyone's read through all the and understand. Did you have a question?
I'd I'd just like to make a statement before we go line by line, if I may.
Sure.
Um, and that is, you know, as as I look through this, I see a a lot of folks have asked for the same amount every year and always do every year. And there's nothing wrong with that. If they need that, if they need those funds, and this is in fact a grant and aid, that's good. Let's, let's help those folks out. But I also see groups like, for example, Supper's Ready that asked for five thousand dollars last year, don't need the money this year. They didn't come forward, and that's, that's good, too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we would, we would encourage people who don't need the funds to not ask us for money just because we're here to be asked for. And so when we come to other groups that do need money this year, I think we need to give them fair and and honest consideration. But we also need to look very carefully, I think, at those groups that have asked for more money than our policy um allows for. So that's, that's my only comment, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bateman?
Uh, just a general question before we start. Is there any for the directors, sorry? Is there any of these groups that are applying for grant and aids that received it last year, but due to COVID restrictions? Do we know whether they use it or returned it? Because I know some of, some group may have been impacted where they weren't allowed to operate.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. Um, the policy does um does state that if they don't use the funds, that they should be re- that they will be returned to the municipality. I have not received any funds back.
Did we receive a report as far as how the funds were used or proof that the funds were used?
Um, each year when they reapply, um, they they do provide their financial information.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have to admit that I don't go through all their financial information that closely. Um. Mainly because it's this committee's decision, not mine, um, on whether they, you know, um, should, should apply, should receive. That's the, that you're the ones that will vote on it. Um, I do put asterisk beside where I think, where I see that they've um asked for more than the policy provides. Um. But there was very few of those this year, and I did reach out to to hospital foundations that are going to be receiving money through Northumberland County. Um. They, they did um withdraw. Um, one of the hospitals did ask that I um that I remind or ask Mayor Ostrander um to um to see if they can get their funding before the end of their year, which is April thirtieth. They've probably already proposed that to Northumberland County. But they did withdraw based on the fact that they will be getting funding from the county. Um, other than that, Supper's Ready didn't apply, and um some went, some went up and some stayed the same.
Okay, thank you. I I think let's start going through, and then if um anyone has, um I'm just going to state who and what, and I may, some of them I I understand quite well, some I don't, I may make something, but then we can, you know, if we want to discuss it, we can discuss it. But if you're okay with it, just give me a nod ahead so we can kind of keep moving, because we will have discussion on some for sure, so you don't want to spend a lot of time on each one. Uh, Quinny Salability, a thousand dollars. Yeah. Uh, Proctor House, Soho, uh, that's twelve thousand, and I was on that with that group, and I know what their budget is like and what they need this money for, so it's it's to cover their insurance, basically, yeah. So everyone good with that? Okay, so we have sunny days. Um, and this is an increase um up to twenty thousand this year. We just heard from them tonight that um this is uh for an increase in 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 people that they're servicing. Um, I'm gonna open it up for any uh comment from council at this point. Counselor Anderson?
It's nice to see their growth uh in the, in the way how much they're caring for people, and I don't mean it's great to see uh people in need or anything, that type of growth, but I'm talking about the the work they're doing is great. I know they're planning on doing, uh, I haven't, I'm not right up to date on it, but some capital plans for uh accommodations and those type of things. Uh, this will have nothing to do with that, I presume, and that's what I read. Um, but it's, it's like uh it's like the boat uh did plans sometimes turn into bigger tickets the following year, so I just, uh, if we're gonna have a take part in any of that at any time, we should, we should think of that, but um uh, so this is quite a substantial, perhaps, uh, perhaps there's a way of looking at it where uh we split the difference on this with uh with this group, and they continue to work hard. Perhaps they'll have more, so they were, they, they're fantastic at fundraising, but it, I know it's nickel dime uh when it comes to a large, large, but they've got a lot of things on the go. They have a capital project on the go. But if we can meet them partway, I I'd be good with that, or whichever way this council feels.
How many other comments? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'm for sure this group is uh beginning the fundraising process for a capital build. Um, they're, they're nowhere near where they need to be. They don't have the land to build on or anything like that, so there's, there's a lot, a lot to do before they get down that road, and a lot of fundraising to do before they before they get there, but this is not part of, certainly not part of that uh, that goal. And and yes, it is, it is nice when you see um an organization grow, but in the case of this organization, it it simply means costs when they grow because they receive no uh, no provincial funding. Um, I've had conversations with the former minister about that, and there's just no opportunity there, so um, thi- this, this will help them out, but I I agree, it's a, it's a big jump from five to twenty, and and if we can come up with a a a number that uh makes sense for for the municipality and also will help sunny days out, I think, um, I think we can probably be amenable to that.
Okay, I I do agree. Um, obviously, there's some growth there, and I want to see us help. Uh, I I think there's a lot of organizations that don't receive any kind of government funding, and I think we have to be careful that we don't become the large donor or funder of local charities, so we have to be careful about how we make these decisions, I think, because that's not the, we're there, we're here to help out for a project or um, but not to be um, uh, yeah, that large funder. Um, any other comments on sunny days? Maybe uh we can kind of figure out an amount. Go ahead, Counsel LeBlanc.
I think it's a great organization, and uh uh, basically, the the twenty thousand, I would support it because I see we are, we don't have any handicaps here in this room, but or anything like that, that would need that type of help and assistance, and the people that generate your time, and all the other businesses that support them, because they have all kinds of other needs. And uh, so I would stay the, I would say the twenty because that's where I would be.
Okay, thank you. No doubt, it's a great organizations. We have a number of them here. Um, so uh, anyone else comment on it? Um, uh, are we comfortable at the twenty? Do we want to go to ten or fifteen? Uh, what's, what's kind of the want of council? We do have to do a bit of uh finagling in order to get to a reasonable about, like I said, I think it's about a hundred and forty-seven, but we we usually leave a little bit so that if there are other needs that come throughout the year, so we may have to go down to about one thirty-seven. And and maybe Linda, as we're making decisions, you can kind of let us know where we're at, right? Um, uh, so I need to hear from council. I've heard a few members of council say a little bit less. Uh, what's the general consensus here? Go ahead, Counsel Tadman.
Deputy Mayor, well, uh, just um, we're at one ninety-one if we granted everything.
Right.
So uh, and we're talking uh as high as we can go, really, and we shouldn't leave some.
Yeah.
Would be one forty-seven, so somebody's got to be cut. There's what, forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty there, so um, as much as I, you know, I would love to give maximum for everybody. We have to, we have to sharpen our pencils here.
Mm-hmm. So what would you?
Find some other way to, and I don't know what the other way would be to find the financing for some of these projects, because they're all, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they're all very good projects.
Right, a- and of course they are, and I think each organization has their own struggles, right? I I've worked with a lot of nonprofit, you know, it's a struggle, and everyone has to kind of figure out how to do their fundraising, and and of course, we all want to help as much as we can, so is there, is there an amount you're comfortable with, uh, Counsel Tadman, or I don't want to put anyone on the spot, we just have to cart, start throwing them out there, ten, fifteen?
I, I step in?
Actually, Counsel Tadman is, was just about to speak.
Yes, as much as, and I've always supported this group, but as much as I don't want to cut, I think we have to cut it to half for this year.
To ten, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, Counselor Anderson, did you want to add something now?
I would, I agree with Counselor Tymon. That's exactly where I was going to be with this.
So ten, um. Counselor LeBlanc, you had your hand up.
Yes, I know, through your chair. I know we're discussing this one. But could I jump down a bit to the seventy thousand dollar one, just for a minute?
Um, we will be discussing them in a minute. We're just going, let's just finish up. Whatever we say, it's not, we can, we can come back to this if we want to at one point, so we're getting the idea right now that um, we're, we're looking at possibly ten. Is is that kind of the idea? Um, but we certainly can come back to it. We're going to go back and forth a little bit. Okay. Um, so we have the, next, the beacon, it is the same amount. It's for their, their operations. Any comments from council or on that one? We're okay with that? Um, waterfront regeneration trust, five hundred dollars. We want to have a discussion, we want, or that, we're okay with that. Thank you. The Brighton Garden Club, seven hundred dollars. Go ahead.
Just say the seven hundred dollars goes an awful long way in our community for the work they do for, for the parks and and throughout the community.
Yeah, okay, money well spent. Um, Brighton Community Care, five thousand dollars. Yeah. Okay, so now we're at the uh, the seventy thousand dollars for uh Baru. Um, uh right off the gate, in my opinion, we can't forgive seventy thousand dollars in one year, so uh we need to talk about different options. I really think that that's important. Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I'll throw two ideas out to council. The first would be um, provide them with a twenty thousand dollars of relief. That would be the maximum of our policy, and and that would start them down the road of relief. Uh, the other suggestion I would be would be, or um earmark thirty-five thousand dollars in this budget um with a matching um, with a matching uh requirement, so for every dollar they bring in, we match a dollar up to thirty-five thousand dollars. That way they can pay off their seventy thousand dollar loan over the course of the year if they're able to raise thirty-five themselves.
So if they only raise twenty themselves, we'll be matching at twenty, is what you're saying. So that's two different scenarios. Either we just go to the twenty thousand, the the max that we allow per policy, or that we go to thirty-five as long as there's a matching uh initiative. Um, Counselor Anderson?
Are you compare, uh, so there's requested tonight, there's seventy-three thousand seven hundred and fifty, you're talking twenty.
The total of seventy-five, and I would say let's separate the two out.
Seventy-five.
Right now, we're just discussing the seventy, the forgiving of the loan, and then we can discuss the next item.
Here, oh, it's not gonna be part and parcel, so.
They're two different items. Forgiving a loan is is one, is a different conversation, so that's what we're working on now. They're two different items. Forgiving a loan is is one, is a different conversation, so that's what we're working on now. Counselor Tadman?
So our policy does state twenty thousand, correct? And as much as I think they do a marvelous job and they're all volunteers.
They do.
And and they did, she did say that some, they get some funding for the operating, not the off, the equipment. On the boat from other municipalities. And also that they've tried very hard to get grants. From different things and and it's almost impossible to raise money right now, and I like your idea of matching. But I don't know how they would raise the funds. So. Because our policy says twenty thousand, I don't like to go against that when when so many people are needy and want grants, so. As much as I'd like to say forgive the whole thing, and that's the way I I felt in the beginning when we first loaned them the money. I don't think we can go against the policy with all the asks here, all the requests.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, Linda, would you be able to give us an idea? We gave them a seventy thousand dollar loan, have they paid some of it back? Is there an interest rate that we're charging them? Are you able to give us that info right now?
So the interest rate that we're charging is really low because it's what we collect on our bank account. So in the past year, it's been point seven percent. They, we loaned them seventy thousand dollars, they made a payment in December of last year. And then they made another payment in December of five thousand dollars.
Okay, so they have made some payments.
And then, yes, and then they made another payment in June and there's one due at the beginning of December, so. With that June payment, they're currently at sixty one thousand seven hundred and nine dollars.
Thank you for that, that helps.
Yeah, thank you for that, because that was my question kind of earlier, and we didn't put a limit on how long it would take them to pay it off.
The the loan was a twenty year loan.
So if we took, if we were to agree on twenty thousand, they would be at approximately forty thousand left, correct? After they make maybe another payment next week.
Is correct. Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Maybe the question might be the, maybe the payment schedule is a little heavy for them. Because they don't have a lot of money coming in, perhaps if half of was or part of it was covered by. By this council, then those payments might be more attainable based on whatever sources of fundraising they can do.
Well, if we reduce it by the twenty and then there left, but about forty one thousand, I'm sure the payment schedule would be adjusted to that.
We don't typically, because we have an agreement.
I see.
We don't typically change the payment schedule. They're paying about thirty, thirty seven hundred and fifty dollars a year, about what we give them and.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So you were saying that they had paid five, but that was out of their own, they they paid extra then.
They paid an extra principal.
So it's not that it's not attainable, it's that they chose to pay a little extra. So, okay, that makes sense, thank you. Counselor Bateman?
I would support going up to the twenty thousand because that's the limit, so I wouldn't want to go over that. But at the same time, I would still like to, I don't know when the opportunity would be where we would reach out to other municipalities. With a friendly letter, if it's possible, they might not do it. This was our decision to give them the loan, but at the same time, we heard they covered six hundred and some square miles or kilometers. It, I would like to see us as a council, ask if other municipalities would want to. Join in on this down the road, but we have to make a decision on this and I would go with the twenty thousand.
So first of all, twenty thousand is the limit, but they have to ask, so we'd still be going over the limit, number one. Number two, it's not our job to go to other municipalities to ask for something for money for charitable organizations, so we have to just make our decision here. I don't think we can go and start looking to other municipalities, that would be up to them. So are are we all comfortable with twenty thousand, even though knowing that the next ask is going to bring us over our limit? Same same organization, it's not too, yeah, it's the same organization.
Totally stay within the. Because by putting it, breaking it in the two groups, like that, that other groups could do that too.
And it's it's because of the loan, it's the only reason why it's a separate ask. Yeah.
If it's justified, then I I say let's go with it.
As council, we're allowed to make that decision. Go ahead.
I I presume, and it's it's not appropriate that I do that, I, but I'm assuming that if we. Provide a twenty thousand dollar loan forgiveness online item number one for Baru. We wouldn't be writing them a check, we would just be forgiving twenty thousand dollars on their loan, correct? Okay, so it's a little bit different. I mean, it really doesn't fall within our grants and aid policy, so it's a little bit different, but. But I agree with Counselor Tadman, you know, we have to, we have to watch ourselves very carefully here, or we end up with. Five different groups coming to us with, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar requests, so. I I agree with the twenty thousand dollar loan forgiveness and then let's talk the next line item.
So if we're going to forgive a loan, are we going to move money from, sorry, I'm thinking of the accounting side of things, are we going to move money from grants and aid to? Pay off the loan internally? Okay, thank you. Are we in agreement on the twenty thousand or can we make that reduction here? Is everyone okay with that? Just a nod of heads, yes or no?
Just on an accounting point, if we move twenty thousand from grants and aid to pay the loan. Does that?
Reduce the loan.
We remove, we do that in one year or do we do that in the?
One year. Am I getting a nod of heads or? Okay, so that's reduced to twenty thousand. Where does that put us, Linda? Go ahead, Counselor Raleigh.
Thank you. If we're redoing, reducing that, where does that, where does that loan sit that we have to now? Pay that twenty thousand, right, or how?
We're moving it.
Is it just creative accounting in this this case?
There's no such thing as creative accounting. We're moving from grants and aid, twenty thousand internally, we're moving it from there. And we're putting against the loan to reduce it down to to what, what did we say, forty one thousand?
Okay, so.
So they still owe the forty one thousand, we're just making a transfer, not giving them the money and having them pay it back, it'd be like we did, but we're doing it internally.
Right, but we, where where does it show? In our reserves or in our monies then? Just asking that question. It's got to come from, it's got to come from somewhere.
Yes, there you, Deputy Mayor, so it'll show as a, an amount coming out of grants and aid, so it'll show the expense in grants and aid. But then what will happen is the balance sheet gets reduced by that twenty thousand, it's just. It's not really money, we're not really transferring money, we're just transferring numbers. Deputy Mayor, you asked.
Yeah.
Right now, with the twenty thousand. We're at fifty five thousand seven hundred.
Fifty five thousand for the community support.
Just the, just the ones that you've approved.
Okay, and and that includes twenty thousand for Baru and then does that include the reduction for sunny days? That we talked about, the ten for sunny days?
That's correct. We have a thousand for Quinney Salability, twelve for Soho, ten thousand for sunny days, sixty five hundred for the beacon. Five hundred for waterfront generation, regeneration, Brighton Garden Club, seven hundred, community care, five thousand. Loan forgiveness, twenty thousand.
Okay, so let's just go down further down to make sure that we're okay with the rest and then we can revisit sunny days if if that's the request of council. So next we have Baru for five thousand, which is for more their operational type of funding that they're looking for. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, does this include the boat slip?
The five thousand dollars does include the boat slip, so it would be thirty seven fifty plus.
Plus the boat slip, plus the total of five, thank you. I'm in favor of leaving it at five.
Yeah, so am I. Anyone, any questions? Okay, next we have the Pine Ridge Retriever Club for a thousand dollars. We're going to continue with that, I'm getting, you have a question, yeah?
Don't, just a comment, they did reach out to me. They did have two trials during the COVID this year, so they did bring, you saw the dogs go around, they did have them, so they did have them, they did host.
Okay, thank you. Next we have the Brighton and District Carpet Bowling Club, this is a new request this year. Looks like they're growing, they're looking for mats and bowls, whatever that, what our bowls are. It says bowls, yes, go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, this is a, this is a new request, but an old group, they've been around a long time, they've never come to us for money and they're growing to the point. Where they need new mats and and bowling balls or bowls as as they're called in the request. Plus they need to, I guess. Switch out some of the older ones they're wearing down, so I am in favor of this. It's a good, good group and a good group for activity for seniors in the community.
So you must bowl there quite a bit.
Sadly not.
So I'm a senior, but some of the people that use this are, one of the ladies is ninety one years old.
Yeah.
And the mats are faded, they can hardly see the numbers on them, they've been playing with the same ones, they do pay their fees, they rent the club three to four times a week. Sometimes three times a day, morning, afternoon and at night group, so they are very active, they need the mats.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? We're pretty much okay with this one? Okay, no, it depends there. Right now, we don't have anything set aside, we'll see where we're at at the end of this group. So do we want to go back up to sunny days? Their quest was twenty, we're talking about ten, we were able to whittle down this other one, we've made some savings, go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I'd rather get through the entire spreadsheet, see where our total bottom line looks like and then we can revisit items.
So next we have a community policing at a thousand dollars, which is the same as other years, I think it's a reasonable request. So next we're, we're at the hospital, so so as Linda had mentioned, Kembleford and Northumberland Hills had pulled their request. Because we are funding them through Northumberland County, so what we have left is university hospitals, basically, which is Kingston. The hospitals for twelve thousand five hundred, this is a new request, so I think we've funded them before, not at all?
They've they've come to council twice with the delegation and a request.
And we have not.
We did not fund them last time around, so this remains a question mark whether we're going to go down this road.
Okay, so let's discuss this one. I did reach out and get a few numbers. There are, I was curious to know if the other municipalities in our area are funding them and there are some counties like Prince Edward County. Frotonet County, Lennox and Addington. United County of Leeds that are funding when quite large amounts. We do have, she said that the city of Babel and Quinty West and city of Kingston are funding individually as well. Obviously for much larger amounts than what they ask is, they ask is quite small of us, and I do understand that we do have people going there. It's so difficult when we talk about hospitals, I'd love to hear from council what what your thoughts are. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I I felt fine with the amount that was asked, that's, I think they're recognizing where we are, but. In their presentation, they're absolutely correct, a lot of our services. Specialty services, people go there and they have to stay there and it's a big cost. But, so I have no problem with it, I just, thinking about the futures, it's going to be how often, you know, this is a long capital project. Are we going to be asked for this amount and and get increased every year? So we're stepping into something here that we need to make sure that we're. We're committed on, I'm sure we can probably do that, I just thinking of the future as well, so all this whittles the way. Our at our own local framework of the needs here, so. I'm good with the the one time this year. Commitment of twelve thousand five hundred dollars and we should take, pay our part. Or a small part, if you know, if if there was, our neighbors were not interested, I think we'd be. It would be easier to say no too, but I don't, I, we are a neighbor of Kingston, so. And and our residents, there's a lot of them going there, so I know that for a fact too, so I'm I'm in on that.
Yeah, and a lot of the other municipalities and counties are pledging five and ten year amounts. At least she's only asking for us one time, she may come back next year, but that's currently what it is now. Counselor Tadman, you got your hand up.
I just wanted to say that we're only committed for this amount. Next year is a totally new year and.
Right.
So we don't have to consider that right now.
Right, thank you. Counselor Bateman, and then I'll go to the side of them.
Just quickly, I support this request from. The Kingston Hospital. I know we have two hospitals in Northumberland County and QHC we utilize, but we have a lot of residents that utilize Kingston Hospital and they provide a service that. Quite frankly, isn't available in Northumberland or in QHC, so I a hundred percent support this.
Actually, I just found out that you do, can receive cancer treatments out of Babel now, so there's an expansion into Babel, which is, which is great, but not that that discounts it, but that's new, so. Counselor Raleigh?
Thank you, I I want to kind of echo what Counselor Bateman said, and when we think about it, it's one dollar per resident in the municipality, right? So I think that dollar goes a long way.
Mayor?
I would only be echoing what has already been said, so I won't repeat it.
Okay, so we're good with the twelve five there. And then we have Trent Memorial Hospital Foundation at twenty five thousand. I I believe we were told that they didn't come as a delegation, but they are here if we have questions for them about that request, so if anyone has a question, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor.
So everyone knows I'm a supporter of the Trent Memorial Hospital Foundation, both from this seat and and personally. But I, you know, we just, we just reduced the seventy thousand dollar request down to twenty because it's part of our policy and I I I really think we should do that as well. Here, knowing that we're going to receive in the operational budget, a request to increase our our. Payment for physician recruitment from twenty five to fifty, so. You know, I I get that's a fee for service, that's a different, that's a different animal altogether, but in this particular instance, I think we should, we should stick with our policy and and offer twenty thousand dollars.
I I did agree with that as well. I, everyone else in agreement with that? Okay, so we're going to reuse that to twenty thousand. So that's it for the hospitals, the next are the cemeteries, nothing majorly new here. I'm not sure that we need to go line by line, we have a few increases and a few decreases, you know, overall. Few thousand dollar increase, I don't think anything looks unreasonable, so it's about twenty three thousand. Any thoughts or questions on this or discussion? Okay, so we're okay with the cemeteries, so that's it, Linda, what what's our bottom line at this point? I want the official word. Nope. I know you can.
I'm sorry, Counselor Raleigh, I don't have the same numbers here, so hopefully I have everything in here. I have that we're at a hundred and twenty five thousand, but I did put in the cash amount of thirty seven fifty for. Baru because the in-kind boat slip isn't really cash. So it doesn't affect your cash budget.
So it's not the same as the loan reduction then?
Well, I I haven't done it that way in the past.
There's no internal transfer. Okay, no, gift and kind would, would, there wouldn't be, right, so. So we're at a hundred and twenty five, is that? Of our hundred and forty seven at this point, so it gives us a little bit of room. Are there any changes that anyone wants to make? Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, with that, if we were to put sunny days back up to their twenty thousand dollars, we'd still have twelve five for future considerations throughout the, throughout twenty twenty two, so I'm. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so we're going to put sunny days up, back up to twenty. For this year? Okay.
And and budget twelve five for future considerations.
And yes, we'll add the twelve five to the.
Set aside, not quite twelve five, yeah.
She knows what we mean. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So general consensus, we're ready to move on to this, we don't need to revisit this, we're okay with this, okay. So that's done. Next we have our external budgets. Now, I was talking to Linda, this this sheet doesn't include our contracts that we've already agreed to, that is, they are on page, I think. I was comparing to page, I think it's twenty four, that includes, when we're talking about, when we go to operating, we're going to see all these items that we have already agreed, I think it's Bea, Quinty. I think it's Bea, Quinte, Cotrington, and the Curling Club. That's not included right here on this page because they're already in place. So they've been added to the budget and to the bottom line. But we don't necessarily need to take a look and debate them tonight because we agree to them in, as council. Does that make sense? So I want to make sure that everyone knows this bottom line for external budgets is a little bit different on page twenty-four in the budget we received because of those few items that are not in here. Okay, so we have the library board. We heard from them tonight. There is a slight increase to four hundred and seventy-two thousand seven, seven, eight. Any discussion on that or concern? Sorry, am I moving along too quickly? Are we good? Well, right, we're talking about this here, what Linda gave us. I was just comparing it to page twenty-four in our budget binder. You can look at it later and know what I mean. I just want to make sure everyone knew there was a difference. That's all. Because I was confused for a little while, and then I became unconfused. And I'm just explaining to you how that came about.
I'm just pleased that you're unconfused.
It's good. Okay, so library board. Library board, four hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Eight thousand dollars is, especially given the changes, what they've had to go through, I think it's fine.
Right, I was pleased with that. Okay. Did you have a comment? Sorry, Counselor Rowley?
Not really, but it, it does say that there's going to be more IT efficiencies as well, right? Which will not only support what the library does downstairs, it's going to support what we do up here with the municipalities. Hopefully, this whole IT business will work better at some.
That would be great. Next, we have our police services board. There's an increase to five thousand. Go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, I'd just like to speak briefly on that. So, the police services board is talking about an amalgamation. So we put five thousand dollars in the budget, just as a place marker, to say that there's a budget there for them, because we don't know what that's going to be. But we removed their revenue, which is why it looks higher. We put the revenue down with the other policing in the budget.
Yeah, and that change may or may not happen in two thousand and twenty-two, but, but, but I understand. Yeah, makes sense. Any questions, Counselor Anderson?
Part of the change is to make, reduce the cost too, isn't it? So, not that we're going to change this number.
In, in theory, but there, we actually don't meet monthly, so then you'll be meeting monthly. So it's going to decrease but increase costs. So I think in the end, it's going to be the same. It's just going to be less work maybe for the police. Well, go ahead.
We, we pay for three members to sit on the current police services board, and we will be down to one. And it should increase operational efficiencies at the OPP when they only have to attend one board meeting instead of six and a half or whatever they attend now.
Wow, right, that's good.
Five thousand dollars, we're going to move on from that? Yeah?
Sure. I, I just want to kind of get some clarification from the mayor, as he said. We will definitely have one member on. There was a talk about kind of really shrinking that whole board number down. And my concern at the time was that we weren't going to have any representation, but we will.
The, the answer is that i- if, if it rolls out the way it's intended to roll out, yes. That there was some fairly significant lobbying to ensure that we would have a board large enough to make sure that all the contract, all the municipalities with contracts across Northumberland County would have a member at the table. So yeah, yes, I'm confident that we will have representation.
Yeah, it was agreed to, as long as we did have, that was a very important point, so.
And there was a lot of work with the Solicitor General's Office to make sure that happened.
Yes, because that would be a concern, I think, not only for this council, but also for our residents that we have.
Right, exactly. Anyone else? Okay, and then we have the OPP contract at one million eight hundred ninety-six, six ninety-six. We don't have a choice. I, I guess our only choice would be if we wanted enhanced services, but we've discussed it other years and, you know, the cost is always
Or, or form our own police service.
Or form.
Which would be significantly higher.
Which I don't think any of us are willing to have that discussion either. We could deputize Counselor Tadman? Mm-hmm, I'm sure you could. Any discussion on this? Just Okay.
Question though, right?
Of course, you can ask a question.
I don't, I don't have anything to discuss, but it's
Everyone's getting quite unruly. Go ahead, Counselor Tad, or Counselor Rowley.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. It's been a while since we've seen any representative really from the OPP. And I know there used to be kind of annual updates, or we used to review the contract a little bit more every so many years. Wondering if that can happen. It would be interesting to see the details sometimes as to what they do. I know I wanted to speak with the, from community events side this last year, and I know it's something that we're covered, but there were extra policing costs that we weren't expecting regarding the parade that we now have to pay for. Wondering, hopefully, speaking with the mayor, it could be a one-off. However, you know, going forward, our events budgets could kind of see increases in this if it's not a one-off.
I believe with Apple Fest, we always paid for policing on those days. It was part of our budget.
With the parade as well, or just for on the street? Because we had to pay extra now.
I can't answer you for sure on that, but I know we did, we had them, we would hire them for the whole day. So it'd be a little bit of everything for that whole day. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just to speak to that, and I won't take too long because this is a budget meeting, but the auxiliary OPP aren't, aren't able to deploy. They're, they're not being called up at the moment under pandemic protocols. So, all of those resources are not available to the OPP or to the community, where normally they would be for community events and, and Apple Fest and things like that. So, it, it was, I think it caught everybody by surprise, including our friends at the OPP, who, who suddenly had to go, oh, oh no, we, we can't, we can't just deploy officers. We're going to have to get you to pay for them. Now, I do understand that the OPP did did give us the cruisers for free at twenty-five dollars an hour, whatever it was. They didn't charge for that. So so there was, there was some give and take for, for that evening, but it did come as a surprise. Now, the Chair of the Police Services Board is attending a webinar with regard to the contract and the cost of the contract. I was invited, and neither the Deputy Mayor nor I are available, so Chair Rinaldi is going to go on our behalf. Once that's done, I'm going to talk to him and see what that looks like. And maybe we'll invite the OPP contract policing folks to attend a council meeting and have a chat with us. Is that fair?
And, and also, we do both re- attend those meetings, and anyone in council can ask us questions to bring, where there's a time where we can ask questions. You know, sometimes we don't have them, but certainly it can be done.
And the Police Services Board minutes come to council, so that's a good time also.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, for sure. Go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
Yes, there was a, a talk, I'm in favor of this budget. There was a talk about enhanced policing, and then we brought it up with the mayor and told us that the, to watch, but the what was going to happen in the near future. And so, in the new future, in the new future from there, which has already passed. Basically, I have seen the enhanced policing, the stops, the stop, going to Tim Hortons, stopping people all over the place in the parking lots and so we all through town. And I've got the complaints. And I said, what are you complaining about? There's nothing to complain about. I'm happy he's doing it. I said, you, you complain about speeding? That's what they want. You got a, please, we got a present. And I have seen it. He said it, so it did happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item. Quinney Access is looking for thirty-five thousand one fifty-nine. That's the, you know, a few thousand dollar increase. We've, we've seen a real increase in the services they provide as well. I believe this is just an estimate at this point, right? So, when do you expect that we might receive that budget? Okay, so so tonight, we're, we're looking at these. We don't necessarily need to make a decision on these at this point. I mean, we can kind of discuss it as a, as a whole later on, just when we get these, these confirmed as well, right? Right, I, I don't, you don't need a decision on these tonight, not like capital, right? Or
No, for the most part, there's probably nothing you're going to be able to do about it. You've got council reps sitting on these boards. And the council reps will do their, their job to get, to keep the budgets down as low as can be.
Right. Right, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Going to seem silly, but can we change the line item to read Quinte Transit because they, they have rebranded? Yeah.
Counselor Rowley, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't, I, I think it's a much-needed service. We hear, we hear good stuff about it. I see it as a small increase and that it might go bigger, especially with the cost of gas these days. We can, that's going to be a big big game changer for some of these ideas. So I expect that this might even go up a little bit more.
Yeah. Thank you. And next, we have the Lower Trent. We heard from them as well tonight, at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. Why am I getting that look? Did I say something? No?
I apologize if I'm giving you a look because I couldn't even see that far.
Okay, I thought I said the wrong number. I'm trying to read expressions. Go ahead, Counselor Tad.
I really think that they worked very hard to get it, we, we as a board and staff. And I don't know, it wasn't mentioned tonight, at least I didn't hear it, that the funding from the province was cut in half this year. So they had to make up all that. Plus, they'd never had a raise from the province for twenty-three years?
Close to thirty years with no increase and then cut.
Then they cut it in half, and then they loaded more work. And so, when they first did their budget, it wasn't acceptable. We went back and, and they cut a lot of things. And you can, you can only cut so much and, and follow the mandate. So I, I think you're not going to get it lower than that. What are we going to do? We're, we can't do it on our own. We can't do conservation on our own.
Yeah, certainly challenging times for the Lower Trent or any conservation authority right now. Go ahead, Counselor Bateman.
I'm just going to mention again, I mentioned it when Rhonda was on the line. One of the biggest impacts is when they have to go to court over anything, because they're mandated to have to do it if somebody's in violation. And the moment they do, they're the the, the CAs have to pay the legal fees and the court costs, and that has to come out of their budget. So, and I'm, I, I can't remember how many Lower Trent's done themselves. So that's money right away that is taken from the other services, because they absolutely have no choice. They're mandated to enforce it. And if they win any fines, it goes to the province and there's nothing coming back to help pay for those fines. So I don't know how you can make up for all that lost revenue, and it's not just a lower trend issue, it's across the board.
Go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
Well, from what, through you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor, from what the Mary Tadman said and Counselor Bateman, you could hear a stress in her voice when she was giving that presentation. You just she's got nothing to be afraid of, but you can also it's just a phrase, you know, you can just hear the stress because they're under a lot of stress for financial, and to keep all the employees and everything, and the service.
Further too, and I know we're not supposed to go on and on when we're discussing numbers here and nothing else, but just to remind people that there's a certain few people in, in the conservation areas that believe this land is my land and I'll do damn well what I want with my land. And so it puts, it puts the board and staff in a, in a really awkward position because you know, you're going to have to put all that extra work into defending that in court. And, and you're still not going to receive anything back. But so many times, because we know it costs so much, we have to compromise and try to work with people that have gone in and destroyed a wetland. Because you know that the conservation authority cannot afford to defend itself, even though it's mandated. So it's a sad situation.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I think the bottom line is obvious. A lot of this is all being downloaded back to the municipalities to support these groups. This group, we need this group. This group does a lot of good work for, for the region, for our area, and for their catchment area. And, and you've got a good board, an excellent board, doing their, during their parts. A lot of it is that they're they're being squeezed, and, and in turn, it's coming right back to the municipalities. And, and it's up to us to speak up, help speak up for them, but also to support them, I guess, through these times until someone, somewhere makes a decision on the value of, of a group like that. It, I'm just going to use another example, like the OPP collects fines from traffic, traffic fines. Well, that money doesn't come back to the municipality. That goes to the province. Now, we'll get some, apparently we get some sort of a little credit or something somewhere down the line. But in other communities like Coburg, part of Coburg, Bevel, the fines go directly into the, into the treasury for the, for the city. So, the, the policing fines for speeding and all those things, and parking, all those things. So there are, there are things that the government, whichever government it is, has their hands in it and that. And so, they can squeeze on one end and get them again. And it's just, for example, if, if the conservation authority or conservation, it's their job to go to court and fight this. They're fighting on behalf of the people, fighting on behalf of the province. But the province isn't there supporting them to do that. They probably feel that they're giving them enough money to do it, which obviously, it doesn't sound like they are. That's my point on that. It's just been eating me up all night hearing about these groups that are out there doing the good for, for the residents of Ontario that somehow are slipping through the cracks, were not getting support when they deserve the support as much as any other nonprofits. So, there's, there's my point. I'm sorry, I had to get that off my chest.
Thank you. So, basically, I think we're all okay with that number. Next is QEDC. I believe this is an estimate as well, forty-eight thousand eight, nine eighty-six. Any questions on that at this point?
Does anyone in the room know when QEDC will be looking at their budget?
Anyone, meaning?
Meaning me, I think. Yeah, I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. No.
Go ahead.
I thought I read something where they were talking with City Bevel and other communities, how much more they were, they were asking for larger amounts. I thought we were going to see something different here.
I don't think they're asking for significantly larger amounts. They're, they're certainly cognizant of the pressures that municipalities are under. And, but they have been busy. They have been incredibly busy over the course of the pandemic with inquiries. So, it's a, it's, it's an odd it's an, it's an odd scenario for QEDC and, and for economic development in Eastern Ontario, where we're getting an awful lot of folks kicking tires in this, this part of the world, as more and more people migrate out of the larger communities.
I think it's, we're going to see some, I think you're right, some action.
Well, speaking of which, and this is totally off topic, but I'm allowed to do this. I was in a webinar with the Quinney Home Builders, or the Ontario Home Builders, and they're saying that in order for Ontario to keep up with growth over the next ten years, we have to build one million homes, which is and it's not going to happen all in, in the larger cities. They're moving out here. So, we have a challenge all around that we're going to have to figure out how to deal with. But, and that plays into that as well, industry as well. So, anyway, totally off topic. DBIA revenue and DBI expenditures increased a little bit, but they offset each other. So our total external budget's here, two million six hundred and thirty-seven, five oh seven. Again, we don't have to make a big decision on this tonight. We're just going over it so that we've gone through those. Anything you need from us, Linda?
No, I just wanted to mention that all those numbers are in your budget currently. And we will meet, I guess, in the new year. The sixth of January, I believe, well, that first tenth of January. Okay, well, we'll meet on that date, and we'll start talking about the operating budget and hopefully, we'll get finished quickly.
Yeah, no, I think things are going well. Counselor Rowley?
The fact that we made a bit of a decrease to the grants and aid should probably bring the tax rate down, like
Uh, no, but we
Because we were at, we went down to one forty, right? Instead of, we took fifty thousand off, right?
Linda had considered that we would be at, only be at the max, not, not the amount here. Okay, the 147 was, was what you had considered, correct? Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
We kept it at that. Okay. Anything else from council at this point?
I'm just checking. Our next meeting is the 10th of January, which is not a council planning meeting. I don't, obviously, or I wouldn't be saying this out loud. Okay, thank you.
The next week.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so next is question period. Do we have anyone? And we have no in-camera session, so just adjourn the meeting. Yay.